Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Do you want me to go ahead and have folks sign in at this point, Charlie?
Any way you want to do it. I'm sitting here scribbling a signature, Dan, so.
Okay, so anybody that is here to speak, please make sure that you've signed in with Charlie. And then before we start the official agenda, we'll make sure that we swear everybody in in case we have any extraglers, okay? I do want to note for the record that Charlie Mifflin, Commissioner Mifflin, Commissioner Vess, bless you, because you're tight, God bless you. Commissioner Green and Commissioner Dean, or Commissioner Jesse, are not present tonight. I don't think any of them will be joining us, but they could surprise us yet. I'm sorry?
Elevators just being.
It just, although it sounds like they're all out of town unbeknownst to maybe. We know, we know about Charlie, but. All right, so a quick review of the agenda. Of course, approval of invoices, approval of the minutes, we'll approve the agenda here in a moment. Items for postponement or withdrawal, I don't think we have any consent agenda items tonight. We have three items on new business, PDP 2023-58, the Bluegrass RV Campground, PDP 2023-59, the Woodland Airstream Dealership, and then ZMA 2023-60, Beerman Properties, which will be a public hearing as it is a zone change request. And we do have one item that we want to add to the agenda for discussion, which is a change in the bylaw, so we'll do that at the end. It'll just be a discussion point, and it'll be something we'll have on the official agenda next month to actually vote on. All right, so has everybody had a chance to look at the invoices?
Mary and Charlie, if I may, in the interest of expediency, may I move to approve and adopt all of the items in the commission business with the inclusion of the addition to the agenda as well?
Is that possible, or do we have to go through one by one?
As far as, I know none of them are out of order, so yeah, unless somebody objects.
Unless somebody has an objection?
Then call us, you know, an out of order to us.
I'm sorry? Second, okay. All in favor? Aye. Chair votes yes, any opposed? All right. Moving on, do we have any items for postponement or withdrawal? Okay. And as I mentioned a minute ago, we do not have any consent agenda items, and we will have in other business the additional item of discussion of potential bylaws change. All right. So before we get started, anybody that is here to speak, please stand up, raise your right hand, and Charlie will swear in.
Do you swear or affirm that the statements you're about to make tonight to be the truth to the best of information and belief? Thank you.
All right. PDP 2023-58, Elise.
Thank you. This is a preliminary development plan for a 75-stall RV campground with landscaping and parking located at 3036 Paris Pike behind or in between the RV Patriot RV sales area and the Bluegrass RV storage facility. This is a B2 zone parcel, joined by B2 and R2 parcels. It's a 6.89 acre parcel with access to either Connector Road or Paris Pike through access easements, and they are requesting a variance as part of their development plan. So this is the kind of larger site as a whole, so you can see the area highlighted in blue with the kind of storage-based developments that are surrounding the property. I've kind of used this slide here just to kind of go over the sections. So at one point, this property was proposed for a two-phase RV campground with amenities, so the first phase being the blue and purple area, the second phase being the green area. They since sold the property to an auto dealer in town and now only have the green portion of the property. In August, we reviewed a preliminary development plan for RV storage. They've since amended their approach and have requested, or are now requesting, an RV campground development. So this is just the dealership that we saw previously. This was what we saw in August, and this is what we're seeing today. So they are interested in the installation of about 137,000 square feet of impervious area, equivalent to about 47% of the total site area, complies with all of our expectations for and requirements of the zoning ordinance, and the site is not proposed to have any major additions of structures. This is primarily stalls, fencing, and landscaping, and their public parking would be located off-site on either the property to the north at Storage or the property to the south, the Bluegrass or the Patriot RV property. When we're kind of reviewing access, because this doesn't have direct road frontage, they are proposing access ease through the Connector Road, through the Dan Cummins property to the north that would get you to Connect Door, and Paris Pike to Patriot RV property to the south. When this was first proposed as the multi-phase development, they did a traffic study, and they, at the time, had proposed 88 RV campground sites. And at the time in 2022, the proposed development would generate 22 a.m. hour peaks and 36 p.m. peak hour trips, and given that this is fewer campground stalls with fewer amenities, it's expected that the development would generate less trips than that. At the time, we'd also discussed the location and how the traffic would go through the property, and while there were conversations on, do we have left turns in, do we have left turns out, what traffic improvements would they be required to have? It would be, it had been identified that while these vehicles do need additional turn space, there's not really a desperate need for off-site improvements to Paris Pike or Connector Road at this time. And in an email dated April 14th, 22, in 2022, KYTC was agreeable to using the existing entrance onto Paris Pike as an entrance to the proposed development and using an existing entrance or access point onto Connector Road as the exit for the development. Anticipated to follow that same kind of scheme and arrangement. The proposed development does meet our requirements for parking, again, for the RV sites. Each one would have a parking area for a person vehicle, and then staff would be kind of a joint employee of, or anticipated to be a joint employee with the dealership to the south or the storage to the north, and staff would therefore park on those properties. These are just pictures if we needed to get over this, but you can kind of see the traffic flow pattern in and out. Because this is a commercially zoned property adjoining residentially zoned properties, they are required to have the commercial residential buffer. Rocky Creek Residential Subdivision is to the east, and they do show sufficient landscaping on that east property line with the trees and buffering that I described in more detail in the staff report. The vehicle use areas to the northwest and south are required to have some VUA perimeter landscaping buffers of three to five feet, and they do show appropriate trees, but on the north and on the south, they will need to add additional hedge buffering to just kind of prevent any photometric photo lighting impacts on the adjoining properties. So that is just a requirement that they will need to just add those buffers to this property. I kind of took painstakingly, I pulled out every one of these because I wanted to kind of illustrate that each of these has kind of its own individual stall interior landscaped area, and then there's several kind of areas where they're more shared or multi-user areas with a dog park and just kind of larger pockets of grassland that could be used for small-scale recreational-type deals. And in order to have this and credit everything that they requested, they do need a variance to the maximum area of contiguous.
Good catch.
Cool. I can just, I can just head on out, that was crazy. They are requesting a variance to the contiguous area of an interior landscaped island, and staff is inclined to support that, given that these are kind of individual-use ones that offers some usable grass areas and overall kind of provides some greenery and sound dampening by having these pockets of interior landscaping. And so staff supports the request for this. Last little item before I get into some stormwater and additional comments, the maximum canopy or the minimum canopy required on the site, because it's a full redevelopment, is 24%, which they do propose sufficient volume of. In the plan for the RV campground to the south, which is, so many more slides in orange there, they were approved with an understanding that they would be granted a temporary variance to their tree canopy requirements, and that when future phases of development of the green, pink, and the darker blue colors would occur, those sites would be planted in such a way that it would ultimately bring the orange site and that site combined to a total tree canopy coverage of 20%. So we've included it as a condition again, because it is a condition of approval of the previous first phases of this development, that they need to consider this, and they need to plant additional landscaping or pick appropriate tree species that would therefore bring up that site to the south and that site presently being developed or proposed to be developed to the proper standards. They could add more plantings to the existing Patriot RV site. We would need an amended landscaping plan. It would be kind of something to consider, but it is still a condition that we're going to carry forward. Ultimately, staff recommends approval of the preliminary development plan with that variance to the maximum contiguous area of an interior landscaped area and 11 conditions of approval. I'd like to point out specifically item nine on the photometric plan to ensure that there's no negative impacts of the lighting on the residential areas to the east. Item 10, which talks about that tree canopy requirement that I mentioned before, and item 11 is just general satisfy the requirements for vehicle, recreational vehicle communities that we defer to the state on. Besides that, I have, I have nothing else really to offer.
Anyone have any questions for Elise from the commission? No? All right, the applicant's here. Could you?
Good evening. My name is Brad Boas, CMW Architects. I appreciate Elise's presentation. I think she did an excellent job of illustrating what we were trying to do, which was show the landscaping and the green spaces between all the spaces, just to try to emphasize that, you know, we do want this to be comfortable in terms of impervious versus pervious areas. So we accept the 11 conditions and request your approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
This is probably not a question for you, I don't know if there's any other folks associating with the tenants, but with these being all self-sufficient sites, do they all have electric to them as well?
Yes, sir.
I guess one question I would have, just in interest of the residential areas adjoining, are there any plans for restricted generator use or quiet hours? That'd be the only question I had, and it's just a general question, something to consider.
Honestly, we had not considered that, but certainly we would want to be respectful to the, to the neighbors.
Yeah, between that and that, traffic and lighting, I'd see those probably being your three neighborly barriers, but.
Of course.
Then we discussed the cell tower, of course, at the.
Yeah, and then that as well. Just as general.
No, I understand, and certainly we would be, if that became an issue, we'd address it.
Any other questions? Anybody in the audience wish to speak on this one or have a question? All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve PDP 2023-58 with the recommendations of staff.
Okay. Second? Okay, Mr. Charlie?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. If you want to come up and sign, here.
Throw me a pen.
There you go.
Thank you.
You're welcome. See, I told you, woman, I keep straight in here. All right. Moving on. PDP 2023-59. Elise, you're the lucky one again, aren't you? Star of the show.
Jumping right back in. It's all good. I don't feel it, I really. Thanks. This is PDP 2023-59, a preliminary development plan for a 12,000 and some square foot Airstream Dealership and Service Center with some outdoor display located at 120 Wayland Hall Path. It's a B2 highway commercial zone property that measures approximately 6.27 acres with access to Paris Pike via Elkhorn Meadows Drive in Wayland Hall Path. They propose 30 parking or personal vehicle spaces and 79 display areas, and have requested five variances. I would like to state that eventually we will discuss some of these variances and waivers, and there have been some amendments made to their landscape proposal that I've included with, for you guys, in the 11 by 17s that were at your chairs, and after all, things are considered, we've kind of amended some of their waiver language to more specifically and accurately represent the changes that have been made. So I'll get to those when we get there. But they do request waivers and variances to allow for VUA perimeter landscaping instead of property perimeter, interior landscaping and trees, and then total site tree canopy coverage. This is an aerial shot of the property here, so this is one of the few remaining lots, kind of in that Findley Drive pocket southeast of the intersection of Paris Pike and McCloughan Circle, Cherry Blossom Way, and they're looking to develop kind of the northern portion of the curve and leave that southern portion of Wayland Hall Path undeveloped at this time, or at least not impacted majorly by development. They, yeah, so this is their proposal here, so they have kind of, they're located in the northwest corner of the property, their facility with sales offices and services, some parking to the, kind of around that area for staff and customers, and then display areas to the east and south, so that people can see vehicles as they're going by. I will talk about it shortly, but they do propose a retaining wall because of the way that the property is sloped as you go away from Paris Pike and go travel south. So those are the two areas that I talked about, and these are kind of the highlighting of the parking areas. It does meet our requirements for vehicle sales and vehicle service areas because it's a combined use, they need to use both of them together, and they, they do meet that requirement, they'll provide appropriate 88 parking and, and everything like that. And then all those areas in blue are their vehicle display areas, that they have items for sale, small trucks, drivables, those types of deals. They have requested a waiver to use a smaller area than what is the total impervious area that they'll be adding to the property. I've highlighted it more distinctly in blue and purple here. The areas in blue are those that are going to be used by customers, staff, transporting companies, that type of thing on a more regular basis. And the items in pink and purple are those for vehicle display. And in past instances, such as the Dan Cummins site off of Connector Road and other RV dealerships, there have been waivers requested that when you're calculating their interior landscaped areas and their VUA perimeter requirements, that they use the areas that are only frequently used and not for display as the nature of the business is outdoor. You can't really put these inside, it's not super feasible for that, and so they're just requesting to use the areas that are used versus the areas for display, which staff is in favor of supporting, again, saying that others have requested pretty much the same variances and the same waivers. And so going forward, when we're talking about calculations, it'll be off of an adjusted vehicle use area. When, kind of moving onwards, we're looking at the property perimeter and VUA perimeter landscaping. Because this is technically a triple frontage lot with frontage off of, to the west, Elkhorn Meadows Drive, to the north and east, kind of I-75 and Paris Pike, they have to adhere to the more strict of two vehicle perimeter landscaping requirements, which would technically be the perimeter landscaping. It allows, it requires taller buffers, more frequent tree plantings versus the VUA perimeter buffer, which requires smaller trees, shorter landscaping, more of a kind of lower planting of a buffer to prevent the lights from vehicle headlamps from getting into a passing roadway. And they've requested a waiver to use the VUA one for consistency, and because of the nature of the terrain of the property and the nature of the business, it is just easier to see and have greater usability of the property if they're able to have that shorter appearing buffer, as opposed to the more frequent planting six-foot-tall buffer requirements. And staff is inclined to support that one as well. They are, and then they have their vehicle perimeter buffering on the south and the west property lines as well that they'll be meeting, and they amended versions do satisfy those requirements, so we've kind of moved up from there. The interior landscaped areas I've highlighted in green talks about, they've requested variances to the total number of trees. I've identified nine interior landscaped areas, and they've requested that while the interior landscaped area provided, or the ratio of trees to, trees provided to the interior landscaped area be less than what we would technically require based off of what they have. So they would be required to have 15, they've show six. I, we support some level of this, but staff recommends because they can fit, and they've demonstrated that they can fit trees on lots as small as 150 square feet, that they put one tree or equivalent to one tree per interior landscaped area, so be there on some of these larger ones to the east and to the south, they put two trees, or they put one per each island, just something like that, so that it's not such a severe drop where you're taking it in essentially a third of what you would be required. You're now just looking at two-thirds of it and kind of having those smaller tree plantings around. So we do, we do support some accommodation for the interior tree area or tree count requirement, but not the full extent that they've requested. The last item, and this is where I kind of amend the language for one of them, is talking about the tree canopy requirement, because this is a total site redevelopment, 24% of tree canopy is required to be reinstalled, and if you're using the entirety of the property, you're requesting 9.2% or equivalent to 9.2% of the total site area being canopied, but they're only really using that northern portion, which is about three and a quarter acres. So they're requesting that they get a waiver to use only the, really, the area of impact versus the total site area, because they're not touching that southern portion. It would be, it would result in a very heavily forested or atypically planted site if they were required to adhere to the full site, and so they've requested that smaller one, and staff is inclined to support that as well. It does differ from the staff reports, and I have the updated language on the conditions of approval and the staff, the presentation here. Specifically, waiver to calculate the required tree canopy coverage to exclude areas not proposed for development, so that would include those areas to the south of Wayland Hall Path. And with the new and amended development plan, landscape plan that they have, that does meet our expectations and requirements, that would require 24% of that northern portion. So they do meet that requirement now, and they no longer need that, that variance, which is what was in the staff report, number four, has now been kind of transformed into a new waiver request. Ultimately, staff recommends approval of the preliminary development plan, subject to approval of the four waivers and variance here, and 10 conditions of approval, which is what the staff report says. Staff recommends, because now that we've pulled that planting to the south thing, and they're now satisfied the tree canopy requirements, condition 10 is no longer applicable. Talks about having 20% total site coverage. With this now meeting the expectations, staff feels like it's inappropriate to require that 20% condition, and so that's been since pulled.
Can you go back to that waiver?
Yeah. So the first three stay the same on the staff report. It's that fourth one that gets changed from, from 24 to nine, from just instead basing it off of the area of impact, which would then result in them having 24% coverage.
Okay.
Does that kind of make sense?
Yeah.
Besides that, that's all I have for you guys.
Any questions?
Just, so on the 15 to nine trees, I saw six, and there's, just explain that one more time, please.
So I counted nine areas. There's four around the building, and then one in, three and four of the corners of the property, and then two kind of flanking the entrance. And so the two that are kind of small, like they don't have a tree right now, and so we've requested that just one or equivalent to one per tree area or one pocket of it be provided, so they can either, they could double them up on some of the larger square ones in the corners, or they could put one in each one. And they've demonstrated that they can put one in a, a tree in an area of 150 square feet, and so they could realistically put one in those areas, or again, they could just double up. And the size of the landscaped areas in the corners would be able to support that, or are believed to support that.
Any other questions from the commission? All right, is the applicant here to speak?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. My name is Keith Holtz. I'm with OHM Advisors, I'm a principal at OHM, and a civil engineer representing Airstream. We do have the owners here with us tonight as well. Thank you, Elise, that was a good summary. I guess a couple of things to address. One, I believe we did meet all the perimeter landscape requirements of one tree per 50, plus the continuous shrubs.
Yeah.
So I think we're good, I believe, on, on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, to the south, yes. And in terms of the internal landscape islands and additional trees, and through conversations with the owner, I think the, what we're trying to avoid is a lot of limbs that hang out over the landscape islands that, as you can imagine, the trailers, pull behind trailers, that's, you know, you're maneuvering around and in and out of this space, and we're worried about scratching, you know, the, you know, the vehicles as they're coming in and out. So as long as we're allowed to do kind of smaller, maybe ornamental trees that stay within the landscape island itself, we're open to that. We just, we're trying to, in, around the maneuvering areas, trying to avoid overhanging limbs for that reason. A little different than a, than a normal parking lot, some of these are fairly large vehicles we're trying to maneuver.
Any concerns from about the ornamental trees versus the?
If it's on those.
We're here to answer any, any questions you might have, otherwise.
Let me add for the record too, that Mr. Jesse Vess joined the meeting.
I said the five months place to be tonight.
Rec?
Many.
All right, well, I'm glad you made it safely. Any questions? All right. Any questions or comments from the audience? All right. With that, I will accept the motion, and I would just note that any motion for approval should include the change to number four in the waiver variance section and the elimination of condition 10 on the conditions of approval.
Make a motion that we approve PDP 2023-59 with staff recommendations of the omission of variance number 10 and the inclusion of number three.
Change to wording on the variance number four and then deletion of number 10 on the conditions. Correct? All right, a second?
A second.
If we might clarify just what those changes are, because I don't quite get that.
So number four is changed to waiver to calculated required tree canopy coverage to exclude areas not proposed for development.
That's already in there?
Yeah.
Is it change to number 10 condition still, or already in here also? We are good.
Okay. All right. Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Charlie?
Yes.
And Mr. Jesse?
Yes.
All right, and the chair votes yes. So just whoever's going to come forward inside, do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. The next item is actually a zone change, ZMA 2023-60, so I will open the public hearing. Yay, yay. Mr. Kane?
Yes. Okay. So this is a zone change request on Lexington Road, south of Georgetown. It's a request to rezone 2.8. Um, it's a request to rezone two point eight eight, two point two eight acres. Um, let's see, the slide is wrong. It should be two point two eight acres from A one agricultural to I two heavy industrial. And this is, uh, a parcel that's located behind the Crest Lawn Cemetery, adjacent to an existing asphalt and concrete crushing recycling operation in the old interstate transformer factory site. So it's actually in the backyard of the old interstate transformer factory, um, in a property that's been zoned I two, I think, since the fifties, sixties, um, when that first, um, the factory first started operating in that location. So the access, um, to this site currently is only through the cemetery, through the cemetery's private street. The proposal, if this is approved, or maybe even if it's not approved, they're gonna, uh, they're, they're planning on buying that property and consolidating it with the existing asphalt yard. So the access would be through, then, through the asphalt, uh, crushing operation, not through the cemetery. Um, this is an area, um, in southern Scott County that we actually did a small area study in two thousand, and again in two thousand thirteen, uh, just after the widening of, of U S twenty-five through this area. It was a two-lane road. It was widened to a divided four-lane highway, essentially. Um, we looked at the whole corridor, um, you know, looked at, met with the public, did a lot of public meetings, we had a steering committee. We, we basically established a future land use, um, plan, or a small area, future land use plan for this area on top of the, and, and then that, that then was, was woven into the comprehensive plan, future land use. Um, but the findings of that study were essentially that we didn't want to see, you know, we wanted to improve water quality, uh, because the stream cane run that runs through the trailer park up, and it flows north into Lexington. It was, you know, the water quality was degraded, we've seen a lot of, um, you know, pollution from not only the trailer park, but from all of Lexington, and that whole corridor, twenty-five corridor. Um, so the idea was to improve water quality by adding, you know, uh, requirements for additional landscaping and riparian buffers, um, not encouraging any additional, um, expansion of industrial or commercial uses, but, um, just kind of, um, showing commercial, uh, showing the land uses as they were at that time. Um, and then the actual interstate transformer part, property was identified as mixed use, um, and the idea was as it developed, maybe a lesser intensive use could be put to that property rather than heavy industrial. Um, this is the zoning map, so that, uh, the red is actually, um, after we did the, the small area study, that property was zoned commercial for the Bevins Motor Company, so it was just, uh, for ag-related commercial uses was the justification for, for that zone change. We didn't recommend approval on that zone change, so staff recommended against it. I believe Planning Commission recommended, um, I'd have to go look back, but it was a split vote essentially, and it was split at fiscal court, but it was eventually approved, I think, either four-three, five-four at fiscal court. So that zone change did occur, and, uh, contrary to the plan for the area, and really the justification was that was an ag-related use, that use would needed more space. It was there to serve the agricultural community. Um, the property behind it was zoned A five, so that weird kind of spotted green, um, pattern is A five, which is rural residential. The remainder, um, of the area has stayed as it was zoned prior to two thousand thirteen. Um, so when we look at a zone change, we look at K R S one hundred requirements for a zone change. One, does it comply with the comprehensive plan? If it doesn't, um, is it zoned inappropriately? Um, if it's not zoned inappropriately, have there been significant changes in the area that weren't considered with the latest comprehensive plan update? So tho, those are, are the standards we look at. Um, this is the latest, uh, this is a two thousand sixteen comprehensive plan update, future land use map. It identifies, uh, the transformer factory, that site, and the adjoining land on each side as commercial, uh, not industrial. And then there were some small, some commercial put in the trailer park to allow for service like uses, you know, that, that could be, uh, beneficial to the trailer park. The blue is quasi-governmental, so that's the cemetery, so that's the entire cemetery site there, the part that's developed, and then this part in the back is, you know, I imagine for future development of the cemetery. Um, but that's the whole, the whole area under ownership by the cemetery, uh, in blue there. The rest, uh, was identified just as agriculture, so remain agriculture, um, protect the corridor from strip commercial uses all along the whole corridor. Um, this is the future land use map that came out of the, um, the small area study in two thousand thirteen. That mixed use for the, the site that we're looking at, I mean, the, the transformer factory, mixed use more, it's, it's commercial, essentially, mixed use types of commercial, or, um, if it was redeveloped, maybe could do some, some higher density residential if, um, um, if sewer was available to that site, which it is now. Um, and then, um, you know, the, the cemetery's still identified quasi-governmental, and then there was a small patch on the, the commercially zoned site across the, the road, which was identified for potential fire station or, or public facility there, just to serve, just to have something close to the, to the trailer park. Uh, so that was the final land use map for the, for the small area study. Uh, so essentially, looking at the comprehensive plan, it doesn't support this change, in staff's opinion. Um, the goals and objectives or the future land use map, it's not, does not support heavy industrial uses expanding on this corridor. Um, the current site has a mature tree line around it, so it's buffered pretty well from adjoining uses now. So if this, if this lot was rezoned and consolidated, likely that tree line would be cut down, and there would be, have to be a new buffer planted around the new two acres. But, I mean, it would take time to grow up. I mean, they could put a fence and so forth, but, um, the, the existing site is, is, is pretty well buffered now. Um, I think outdoor, you know, this, this operation, we haven't had a lot of complaints in our office. I don't know if any other agencies have, none that I've talked to have, um, have said that they've investigated complaints, but it is a crushing rock, you know, concrete crushing and, um, asphalt and material recycling yard. So it's outdoor storage, crushing onsite, it's heavy trucks coming in and out. Um, so it's not really compatible with residential. Um, even a buffer really is not going to provide complete, um, you know, buffering of the use from residential site. So, um, we don't see any justification for expand, for approving expansion. Um, and looking at K R S, it doesn't meet the comprehensive plan. We think the existing zoning of the cemetery site is appropriate, um, and there haven't been any changes in the area that weren't considered when the small area study was done, or when the comprehensive plan was updated. Um, you know, the, I think the land use plan for this area is not to increase industrial use of this corridor, but just to kind of maintain those operations that have lawfully non-conforming status, or have been there for a long time, to allow them to continue to operate until they're redeveloped at some point, or, you know, converted to some other use. But not to expand the zoning in the area, so, um, we are.
Excuse me, I mentioned about you not having complaints. I've driven by there several times and noticed big clouds of dust and debris in there. Then it was very light, but you could clearly see it on several occasions, more than once. I'm surprised you haven't heard anything from that.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, there's not a lot of residential use directly abutting it. There is a small trailer park on the backside, which, you know, I'm not sure, those are all rentals, so they're not complaining, because, maybe because they're rentals.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we haven't, I'm sure there is dust, but, I mean, we haven't got any complaints.
I call it dust cloud. It's probably a bit of dust, actually.
Okay. Um, so we are recommending denial of the zone change. If you do recommend approval, and again, this is a recommendation, so it'll go to fiscal court for final decision, but we are recommending that you would add the two conditions. One, that they come back for a development plan, amended development plan to include this new area in their site, um, and bring that back to Planning Commission, and that that plan meet all our zoning and subdivision regulations.
I guess, uh, in terms of impact, of course, uh, operation's still going to continue that's going on now, regardless of whether this is approved, right?
Right.
Of course, on the cemetery side, they're the ones selling it, so you're likely not going to get complaints from there, right? People in the cemetery, right?
Right.
The ones that are owning it are the ones that, the ones that own it are going to sell it. We talked a little bit about at the workshop, the fact that, right, so it's sort of this little strip between things. It's grown up now. I think my question, concern point would be around, if we do deny it, this operation continues on one side over here, because it's zoned, and they're, you know, they're not out of compliance in terms of any of our ordinances, understanding the cemetery must not have the need to expand, or they wouldn't be selling it. What becomes of that, because really what use, what potential usage does it have? Because who's going to want to buy that with cemetery on one side and this industrial operation on the other, right?
Yeah.
So is it likely at all that it would be anything agricultural, or anything else? Or does it just sit there dormant and continue to be grown up and, um, become an eyesore?
Yeah, it would either have to be, um, consolidated with an adjoining property
Right.
and used, uh, you know, used as part of the adjoining agricultural uses, or used to, you know, expand, you know, expand, renovate, expand the cemetery.
Right.
I mean, as additional revenue for the cemetery to allow it to be maintained and, and continue. Um, now it's a little bit run down. Um, I don't know how much revenue cemeteries bring in, but, I mean, that's potential revenue to keep the cemetery in operation and maintained by having that additional space to, you know, to build it out.
Questions for Joe?
I'm trying to, you know, it's hard to s, see, um, well, I guess there is a scale. Let's see, was it five hundred foot notification, I guess?
Um, thousand.
Thousand. So then the Pratt's probably would have been in that, obviously.
Yeah.
Brandon Burge's, Waymans Lopez, other Waymans, and you received nothing from any of them, and obviously, I don't, I don't guess there's any representatives of them here either, right?
Not that I'm, I did receive one call from the Pratt's, but that's it.
Just kind of asking a question.
Yeah, just asking what it was.
Well, they're a little removed, anyway.
Yeah. Um, it looks like there's about twenty-five, maybe, twenty-five people notified.
Twenty-five to thirty-one?
Yeah, I guess it would be, because I imagine some of it's probably even across Lexington Road, a thousand feet.
Yeah.
Quarter mile.
Probably the church in that first row of trailers there.
Do you have a notice list?
Uh huh. Additional questions for Mr. Kane from the commission?
Has the cemetery, has the cemetery doing time, shown an address or whatever in, in the property maybe, thinking to save it for them later sometime?
They own it.
They own it now.
They own it now, that's who sells it.
They don't want to sell it.
Yeah. And I know it, it, it was sold at auction, I think, about five years ago.
That's when they bought it?
So I remember that. Yeah, I remember that happening.
I wonder who, I don't know if we have that. I'm just curious to know. Obviously, it probably would have been, unless it was just somebody that ended up with a parcel leftover landlocked, you know, you would imagine it would have come from.
Well, that's been sold.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was like, I don't know what this is.
So in some future, somebody else may decide that they can use that for the cemetery. Some future owner may.
Yeah, so here's the notice list, looks like thirty-four. At least individual notices went out with a pretty broad
Yeah.
circle of notification.
I mean, I, I gotta admit, I'm just kind of surprised, you know, if, if somebody were to have received notice, either on, you know, some of these larger agricultural parcels, or residential, or whatever, that, you know, all things, something to be, you know, getting rezoned commercial or something is one thing, but
Right.
an industrial rezoning, you would think a lot of people would be like,
Oh, my gosh, what's happening?
I really, no, or I actually have a concern, and.
Nothing. Crickets.
I'm not saying there's anything wrong with the purpose, I'm just kind of, you know.
Yeah, and perhaps it's because, I don't know, I don't know, of course, you said only Pratt called to clarify. I don't know if it would have been clear, but then it was an expansion of the existing industrial?
Right. Well, and, you know, again, they're, I figured they would be, you know, somewhat vocal, but they're kind of, they've got that buffer there, everybody across, well, what little is there across twenty-five, obviously it's buffered, across Iron Works, it's buffered, so to speak. Um, so again, you know, the people that are really somewhat affected are what you see on the assembly map.
Right.
But your point is that it's not in appropriate use, based on our summary.
Based off the comprehensive plan, right?
Right. Uh, to expand, I mean, that, the site was, has been zoned I two since the fifties or sixties, so what they're doing is permitted out there, but to expand it, I don't think is, hasn't been identified as a, as a desire when we did the update, when we did the small area study in the comprehensive plans, just to kind of, kind of keep that corridor as it is, or beautify it, you know, kind of reduce the heavy use of it, and it's an, it's a corridor, you know, a gateway.
Into Georgetown.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, going back to the point I raised, I think I understand that point completely. My question would be, is it realistic to think somebody's going to come in and buy that two point two eight acres to do residential or, um, agricultural, right, in the middle of all of that, with the cemetery on one side and that on the other? So really, you're left with, eventually, the group doing that industrial recycling decides to sell and go out of business, and, you know, the larger parcel is perhaps available to add that to it, or it sits vacant as it is, unless the cemetery has a need to expand. What'd you say?
It'd be left as a non-sellable.
Yeah, exactly.
Long story short, it's got no access currently unless it's through the cemetery or through the industrial site.
Right.
And say if it does, say, say if the industrial site does ever go up for sale, it's only ever essentially, without serious remediation, going to be used for that, and nobody, I mean, we see with, you know, the lot that used to have the gas station on it and right in downtown, which is prime property.
Yeah, just sit there.
Sat there for what, thirty years? Um, you know, so there's that economic barrier for reuse. And I'm not saying that, you know, maybe Crest Lawn won't go, okay, well, we'll just keep it, but, um, as far as this parcel goes, it's, there's not ever going to be another use for it other than what this is, or that the cemetery reabsorbed it because there's just no access. It's the same scenario we ran into with way back when, you know, the Bevins and them had that landlocked parcel with, was it Anderson that's going in near the colony and all that?
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we start having these little postage stamps that have no access because of just how they were from a hundred years.
Well, the need may change, because isn't it also true that right now, the Georgetown Cemetery is nearing capacity, so it could very easily be about two part of the future then.
I mean, I know everybody's got to have a place to live and a place to lay down for the rest of whatever happens after, but I don't think that cemetery is obviously doing so well. I don't really know how long, you know, they may have bitten off more than they can chew. There's nobody here to represent them at all either, which is also somewhat surprising. You'd figure it's in their best interest to be like, this is why we want to sell it, this is our plans for the future, and we don't have any knowledge on that. And I don't want to put work, these gentlemen put words in their mouth either.
Are they not here? Has it already changed hands?
No, it's not. It's under current lease agreement with the Bevins, who are running, getting a depression. Bevins Brothers have leased it pending a zone change for the. Beerman Brothers have leased it pending a zone change for the, increase in storage. They're not increasing the mandatory or industrial use, they're looking for storage.
Okay.
They signed on.
We would need that unless they've got a contract on it.
Okay.
Say that again?
There is a contract, a lease agreement contract, not a variety.
Well, let's wait just a minute for your comments. Joe, is there anything else that you want to share?
I would just say, I mean, talking about the property has no u, other use, I don't know, we don't know if the cemetery is viable without this expansion area, I mean, it's rundown already. I mean, if they were to sell it off, is what's going to happen to the long-term maintenance of the cemetery?
Well, I'm assuming, I mean, my assumption would be they might be selling it off also for revenue, right? That's, I don't know what the purchase price is, but obviously, they'll get some money for that.
They might could throw that little parcel in as a, you know, perk for somebody to buy the cemetery, to, you know.
Okay.
I don't have anything else.
So does the applicant want to speak at this point?
I appreciate.
Can you go ahead and state your name and?
Keith, I'm sorry, yes, I'm Keith Winston.
Address, okay.
I'm with Thoroughbred Engineering. Just a couple of the notes that we haven't discussed, that did come up during the workshop was the, I mean, this is almost abandoned land at this point, it's not being mowed, it's not being cleared, it's not being kept up in any manner. Again, like we already discussed, there's no access to this parcel other than through the cemetery currently. And this, there's approximately twelve acres that are zoned I-2 between the two existing lots. This 2.28 acres would be consolidated with an existing I-2, it's not going to be a separate lot that could be transferred or sold separately, it would become part of the existing I-2 lot. There's no planned increase in capacity for what they're doing, they just need more storage.
That's what they stated, the owners of the cemetery?
No, no, the owners of Beerman.
The no capacity, no additional capacity in terms of what they're doing?
Yes.
Okay, understand, thank you.
Yes, they just need additional storage for, for what they have.
Okay.
And I, I mean, you know, talk about the cemetery needing that for expansion, but I, does anyone know what capacity the rest of the cemetery is? So, I mean, they may have...
Hard to tell, too, because they don't have gravestones, so it's, you know, unless you're going to get out and rock the whole thing.
If there's, are they a hundred percent full or fifty percent full, or, I don't know that number, so, I mean, they're, they may have capacity to grow without this, I, and I don't know the answer to that, but since it was brought up that they needed this, I don't, I don't know if that's true, I don't know if that's accurate or not. The, they have also, with the cemetery, as part of purchasing this, you know, the, I think the, between zones, there's supposed to be a six-foot no-climb fence, but they've already agreed to do a ten-foot privacy-type fence, something you can see through, whatever structure it needs to be, to do it, and, yeah, I appreciate y'all considering it, and if there's any other questions, or Mr. Yance may have some additional comments.
Is the cemetery owned by an LLC or, no, owned by a private individual?
Owned by the partners.
Yeah, partners.
Okay.
The business partner, individual owners, and they're the ones that have entered into the lease agreement with a purchase option with.
Can you come up here and speak in the microphone and introduce yourself?
Sure. My name is Mark Yance, law firm at Urban and Yance, I represent Beerman Properties, the group that owns Innovative Crushing. I negotiated the lease agreement with the partners, so I'm familiar with them, and our discussions about the usage of that, there, there are no plans to expand from what they told us into that area for the cemetery, it wasn't feasible for them, and during the negotiations, the money that they were seeking would only be received from a company like Beerman Properties, who is really the only, like you've all already identified, the only kind of group that would use this property. And if they were trying to sell this property for just agricultural use or some lower use, lower impact use, it would not bring near the revenue that they're going to get under the purchase agreement that they're receiving from Beerman Properties.
So you said the money would go to, is it like a cemetery management group?
No, no, it is just a, they, they bought it, and they're just, they own it individually, they have no plans to continue it as a cemetery, this property is just going to lay there. The only way that they're going to generate revenue is through a sale or a lease, and for that purpose, Beerman Properties is really the only entity that's in place that could take advantage of it.
You say no, they're not going to continue it as a cemetery, meaning they're not going to sell new plots?
Well, they're not going to expand it, they're not going to use this portion of it as a cemetery.
Okay. The operation of the current existing plot?
Yes.
They didn't indicate they were not continuing that.
Right, and that's why we've identified this area as removed from the corridor as far as we could, and it was adjacent to the, to the, the building and the, the industrial use that they could use for storage, and that's one thing that I want to bring up. This is not an expansion of the industrial use, this is just a storage area that they, they need to put some of their equipment and some of the byproducts to store it, it's not an increase of the facility in any manner, so.
Okay.
And there's been a comment made about the, the land being unkept, not mowed, so forth and so on. It's agriculture property, right? We have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of acres in this county of agricultural land that's not mowed, it's full of all kinds of things growing, so I don't think that's something to be worried about, and we are, we've talked to all the farmers all over throughout part, large parts of this community, so.
I brought that up just to make note of the fact that right now, it's a strip of property surrounded by other property that's in use, and I think it's always going to be that way unless we have a logical plan for how it would be utilized. I don't think it's realistic to think somebody's going to come by that one piece, so you have to hope for the Beerman Brothers to go out of business and sell theirs, and I think to Mr. Shirley's point, concern would be how usable would it be, how quickly, right? What kind of market would there be for the property? Given, please don't interrupt me, okay? Given the fact that there's been that recycling, you know, there would be a lot of environmental impact analysis that would have to be done. Now, what were you going to say, I'm sorry?
No, there's other people that may, some of the other joint properties down the line might want it.
I think it's possible, I think it's unlikely, given the stuff that's surrounded.
They could.
What, anything's possible.
But the bottom line, if what you say, Joe, is does not meet the criteria for our...
No, no, not in my professional opinion, it's not.
Mr. Winston, did you have additional information to share from the engineering standpoint?
No.
Okay. Any other, anyone else in the audience here to speak?
If the building is, would be unusable or something, or not if, but suppose it would be unusable if it was torn down and demolished and moved away, would that land still be?
You're talking about the property now where they have the recycling operation?
That they've talked about for storage. Would, would that building be sold that you couldn't use that land for something else?
Say if this operation were to move out?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you all know better than me, you know, what, what the process is here locally, but given the history that what, it was the fifties or sixties it's been I-2, and it were, they were manufacturing at the time, a lot of these properties, again, and it's all case-by-case basis, people don't really want to touch them for any lighter use because, you know, the EPA and other entities are going to come in and say like, man, like, they could have to come in there and dig that whole property up and replace all the tops.
Sure, could.
You know, there could be serious environmental remediation that has to go in, serious infrastructure, because I think last time we talked about their expansion, we were getting into sewer and septic, when there were a little house or something out there they were wanting to use.
Yeah, there, there's a house up front that's also zoned I-2 that they currently own.
That the Beerman Brothers own?
The Beerman's own.
You know, that's probably a lot of the reason why it hasn't, a lot of stuff in that area just hasn't changed at all in the last six years is because of that, you know, like, that's why that factory itself is repurposed as is, and, you know, like anything, oh, you get in there, start tearing stuff down, don't know what you find, don't know what you have to spend or mediate, it's better just not touch it.
Exactly. Another thing, a lot of times a property like that, particularly in junkyards, you know, there was a rule that it couldn't be seen from the roadway passing through, and so on, how would you fix that place to work? You wouldn't really notice it other than, boy, that's a pretty place, everyone who lives back in behind there. You know, so that's kind of outrageous, but it is there along twenty-five and everything, and we're trying to keep the place pretty nice and pretty all the way, and horse farms are coming in, but the numbers right now, even if it's just five or seven acres, you know, people right out, the subdivisions are, you know, want enough to run a horse or two, it's kind of unreal, I don't know how long this is going to last, but it'd be, like it always has, it'll fall back one each day, so I'm sure, but anyway, that, it's kind of a sore eye, it really is.
So I guess, obviously, this property didn't go on public market, it was just a arm's length, like, hey, we have this need, do you all want to lease it to us? I guess, obviously, like, kind of neighbor-to-neighbor transaction.
That's exactly how it works.
Well, and you don't represent the cemetery owners, I mean, I really wish, I really wish, you know, we were able to ask them some questions, that would lend a lot of insight kind of into the overall situation.
Well, if, if, if I may, that really is not our concern.
I mean, it, it is.
I mean, they're property owners and they can dispose of, they can shut down, they can build up, I mean, that's, that really is not something that, either it's, you know, it's within our framework or it's not, their intentions, I mean, that's just simply not our business.
So you ready for a motion?
Uh, well, do we have any other comments or questions? All right, then I think I need to close the public hearing before we actually have the motion correct, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Any other questions or, well, I guess I'll close the public hearing now, so no.
I'd like to make a motion to deny ZMA dash two oh two three dash sixty, based on staff's recommendation.
Second.
That was you, Mr. Stone? Oh, Mr. Smith.
Man, Smith.
I was just using my ear and not my eyes. So we have a motion to deny made by Mr. Jesse and a second by Mr. Smith, so just to be clear, voting yes will be a no to the application, okay?
Okay.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Shirley?
Yes, yes to deny, so motions to deny.
Yes.
Yeses.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes to the application.
Yes to the, so a no?
No, yes, to the application.
Did you want, are you voting to approve or deny the application?
Deny.
Okay, then it's a yes. I know that seems contrary to logic. Mr. Jesse?
Yes, I just, thank you for clarifying that.
Okay, and the chair will vote yes. All right, so motion denied. All right, I mean, motion approved, application denied.
Yes, correct.
All right. So we do have one more item that we want to talk about very briefly. I don't know if you all have any additional copies of this? Do you have any? Because I know, I know that Mr. Jesse wasn't at the workshop, you had one? Okay, great. So we wanted to add one item for discussion onto the agenda that we will actually have, we're planning to have on the formal agenda next week, but we at least wanted to review it. Joe has put together a draft of a...
It's in yellow.
Change to the bylaws, which is in yellow, page seven is where it starts, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I can say the background for this is some executive committee discussion, in that we wanted to make sure that we were running the meetings in a way that allowed everyone an opportunity to speak, but also respect everyone's time, including everybody that's waiting in the audience that might be waiting to speak on a certain application. So Joe did some benchmarking of some other communities in our area and came up with a recommendation that we can, if you want to go through the high points of it?
Yeah, I mean...
Then we can talk a little bit about it.
From what I've seen, either communities allow people to speak until they're, you know, make their point, however long that takes.
Until somebody says, what now?
Limited to five minutes or limited to three minutes, and some communities leave it at the discretion of the chair, so that's kind of the, the route I went. I, I set the limit, time limit is three minutes to speak for each person, you know, if there's a group, you know, they can have one person represent their, their, you know, neighborhood or whatever, but limited to three minutes, but give the chair discretion, so you don't have to necessarily do this every meeting, you know, you can maybe just institute this when there's a controversial item, there's a huge crowd to, so people don't repeat themselves so you can get through all the testimony. So it, it leaves it at the discretion of the chair whether to institute it, so you can do it every time, or you can decide, or the chair can decide. I guess the, well, that's basically it, although I did put in here a note, and I, I got this from a conference that I recently went to, and there was a session about meetings getting derailed and going off the tracks, and one of the main reasons they do is a debate, like the board gets into a debate with individuals in the audience, you know, they start talking to, you know, debating points, so I did put in here a note just to make, just to have it in the bylaws that the commission isn't to debate any individuals, you know, they can state their opinion, you can state your opinion, but you can't, you don't want to get into a debate back and forth with somebody at the podium. It's, item F...
It's one of the Mary written recents.
I'm accusing me of something.
Item F, the chair shall permit commission members to ask questions of members of the public following their comments, but commission members shall not debate an item with the public, so you can ask clarification, or you can ask them to, you know, you can ask them a question, but you shouldn't get into a, you know, a debate that kind of escalates. So very, you know, it's pretty simple, straightforward, but...
Got a question on...
Answer good.
On, on that, so let's say we adopt that, would it be communicated prior to the meeting to the audience that they have three minutes?
Yeah, I think, I think the chair, I think we'd have to get a timer of some kind of clock that would sit up there that the chair could hit, and then probably the chair would just communicate that at the end of the meeting, or we could put it in, you know, on the PowerPoint, we could maybe put it on the podium, on the sign-in sheet.
On the sign-in sheet, the chair could state it, right, before the meeting actually starts.
Yeah, someplace where they could.
Yeah, and we could start, I mean, we could do it, we could start doing it every meeting, I mean, see how it works.
Yeah, and that way we need to adjust it before some big meeting and, you know, when we have thirty people here, to, for that, I don't know, I think it'd be good to have some trial runs before we had a meeting where it was going to really impact the flow of the meeting, would be beneficial to see if we needed to make tweaks to it, assuming it's reviewed and passed next meeting.
I think we'd have to buy some type of clock or device, either like a red light, green light, yellow light thing.
Yeah.
The Kentsel used to have one, I don't know if they still do that or not, do they?
Like Je, Jeopardy has the...
I wonder if fiscal court has one?
I think also in order to achieve what we want to achieve, if this went out in the letters that went to people, you know, and it would behoove them to consolidate and to their speakers, also.
There is a limitation on, of three minutes on time to speak.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yeah, it's a really good idea.
That makes sense?
I want to ask a clarifying question, so we could actually, if we thought the three minutes was too short, we could increase that time maybe to five minutes? Three minutes is not very long.
Yeah.
If I could point out one thing, because I've always had a problem with the three, but the few times I've seen people who got really serious about the enforcement, even though serious, I've never seen any of them actually stop at three, and of course, as Joe was pointing out, if they're actually covering new material, the chair can allow them to continue, because the point is not to stop them from saying things pertinent, the thing is to stop them from repeating, or, you know, either their, their own comments or repeating others, so if they're still breaking new ground and it, and it's pertinent to the, to the subject...
The chair can allow that.
The chair can always allow that.
Yeah.
I, I would also suggest that in places where I've seen it be five minutes, they've kind of routinely gone seven and eight, where people have had it at three, they've routinely gone, you know, five and six, so...
Because I'm thinking at three, you would say something to them, just to make a comment.
Also, I wouldn't say we can do it sometimes and not others, I think it ought to be done every time, and obviously, you know, the more heated and whatnot, you know, the more serious the chair needs to be perhaps, but I think it needs to be done every time, so no application thinks they're being picked out, or no neighborhood, or, you know, whatever the... the, the group might be.
And does it say in here it's to the discretion of the chair?
Um, yes.
So we would need to decide if that, I see Charlie's point, I think there could be an allegation that, oh, it's, they didn't do it for this one, but they did it for that one, and there were twenty-five people for this.
Yeah, so-and-so matters, we, we got pinched down to three minutes and those guys didn't, why, is that because they're more important and we don't need anything?
Even perception of it, even if they're like the Dallas.
Period, yes, that's correct, yes.
Yeah, and to your point, I mean, like tonight's meeting, and I do want it noted for record that this might be a record meeting in terms of expeditious nature in which it has been run. I will say that, you know, on a night like tonight, when it's a pretty light agenda, nothing too controversial, not a lot of people to speak, you can have a little bit more leniency in terms of rant versus a night, you know, where you have people standing room only, then it's something that you're going to have to manage tightly, so it still requires discretion, but it's still something that we do each time.
And that would be a time to announce it too, if there's a big, you have a lot of people taking it, by the way.
Go out in the hallway, get your group together and figure out who's going to speak for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, so, do we want to, I guess in the, do we want to ask for the provision of it before we bring it back to the next meeting, to take out the fact that it's discretion, but that it is something that we would do every meeting?
Depends what's on the pipeline. Do we need this done now?
Well, we're not going to vote on it tonight anyway, it'll be on the agenda next, next month.
Well, the way that.
One question I had.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, the way it's written is you're going to do it every time, but it's just written that the chair, like item.
The chair can entertain a motion to dispose of the item, is that?
No.
No, but the chair's, chair's the enforcement officer, so, I mean, the officer's always got some discretion.
Right.
So, I mean, it's just simply you're running the meeting, you know, that you've got some discretion, I mean, we can't possibly legislate this kind of comments, you get an extra minute for kind of comments.
Yeah, I mean.
So it's just period, it's three minutes, you've got discretion to, to make sure that we adhere it as best we can.
So, paragraph D says, presentations for items shall be limited to three minutes per person unless the chair in their sole discretion determines additional time as necessary.
Okay, the next.
But, I mean, there's nothing in here that says we're only going to do it.
If the chair decides to.
Yeah, it's going to do it every time.
Item I, the chair shall entertain a motion to dispose of the item.
Say that again?
Item I and J, item's I and J, the chair shall entertain a motion to dispose of the item.
That's just saying the chair will ask for a vote, like, you know.
To end the discussion?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's what that's meant to say.
Okay.
The chair, after, you know, after all the debate discussion.
What we do now.
Deliberation, the chair asks for the vote.
... everything that we said needs to be reported.
Okay.